Here she is.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
We're alive.
How are you?
Where is that?
Sammy Nichols?
He's retiring too.
Charles, how's everybody doing?
Charles!
How are y'all?
Charles?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we got one question for you. What's at the bin?
I don't know.
I don't care. You're Jay. You all right?
Good.
Everything going good, Charles?
Everything's good. Wayne.
Good day.
Just started my day. Been all night.
Oh, is that right?
Four weeks.
That is how, you know, how a lot of your men, they get not negotiating to get not very much, as much as they actually cost. I say, ladies, he brought it up, that everybody go out and purchasing it for your men, so.
Yeah, but they're doing work.
I understand. And so, we can talk to him about it.
Did he give you a reason for dating Seth to us?
He said also, um, some of the work, but then also, he also works, you know, he's gonna continue to work with I said, well, how, how can you justify us paying for it when we were going to retire? And so, that's right. But again, you'll have to approve it, and then we can talk, we can talk to him about it. I don't, I went back and forth with him a minute time ago.
I don't, I don't see the need for it. I mean, if he was working at prison, or in the ground, or in the
I understand. No, I, I agree with you.
I'm on the ground or something, I'm awake, you know?
Yeah.
What about Hartman?
Okay, I brought it with me. Are we, are we gonna get into that? I mean, I brought, I brought it, um, just for, there's multiple different deals on here, but one, I think you're talking about is this right here, it's basically tourism purchased every single year. It has a city center, Henderson, this is the depot, pay.
That's what tourism does, at nine hundred and something dollars. Three of them.
One check, one check, but five invoices.
We're all for it.
Okay. Caitlin Smith, advertising notice, six hundred and sixty-three. Yeah, yes. Yes, she has to do that. Another Caitlin Smith, ninety-seven fifty, that was her too. Okay, then we got, oh, and I was six-five.
Okay, you do, I go second.
Thank you. The next one is, the next three are for the depot museum. The three different ones were.
It's after ten, I'm sorry. We'll get back to that. That tells me the Russ County Commissioners Court order is November the ninth, twenty-twenty, at ten, it's ten a.m., early after. I'd like to ask Charles Hilton to lead us in prayer. Lady May standing in the pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, we just come to you, Lord, to just thank you for another day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for waking us up, and waking us up in our right minds, Lord. We know that, that everything we do, Lord, is by your grace and by your mercy. Father God, we just ask that you would just be with all our elected officials, all our city officials, Lord. We just ask that you would just be with our officials across the state. We pray that during this time, Lord, that you would break a peace, Lord, that we could have a smooth transition to whatever it is, Lord, that you seek, Lord. For we know that we cannot do anything without you, Lord. We know that everything happens, that it's by your grace and by your mercy. And just pray that you would just continue to be with us, that you would just continue to guide us, Lord. That you would just continue to let our light shine, that we can be a blessing, Lord, that we can bless those around us, Lord. I just ask that you would just be with everyone, and bless their families, Lord. Just pray that you would just be the ones that, that are here, the ones that had a desire to be here and couldn't make it. We just thank you for this day you've given. Jesus' name, I pray.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
First item on the agenda is to discuss possibly approved amendments and/or transfer.
I'm gonna pass it. I tried to use the system, and it's not legible, so, so I will bring it from the board. I was trying to, there's a way in the computer to let the system, so I don't manually enter all the transfers. The problem is the report that you approved with, um, it didn't print out, and I'm not, I have to, so I apologize for that. No, I don't, I don't want you to approve something that you can't read.
Have a motion, Mr. Whitworth, to pass. Secretary Gibson, all those in favor. All those opposed, motion passes. Number two, discuss possibly approved special warrant to DMC, West County, William Emmens, for property survey by DDM Surveying Incorporated, property located at one-two-five, Cantor Two-O-Four South, Henderson, Texas. When I got that from Paul Nelson's office, I carried it over to Wayne Miley, man, looking at, making sure that it was similar to that deal we did before, where there was an old railway. This is similar to that situation. You know?
Were there any minerals involved in?
Don't think so.
Well, what's your recommendation? I mean, Robert, Robert, I guess then your first name, you already told me all about it.
I don't know, we can find out.
We can get, we can get the one to fill the next name, put a pass on it, is that? I made the motion, Secretary, Mr. Hale, to pass on. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Number three, discuss possibly approved campus November third, twenty-twenty, general election returns.
Kate?
I did a quick comparison between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty general elections, just so you can kind of see what the difference is between those two years. So that first sheet, that's just a comparison, because I know you always kind of have questions about the past election of that type, what the difference were. So overall, I think it's, you know, pretty standard, especially considering you had three weeks of early voting. We had, um, twenty-four, hundred and fifty-one people difference in that three-week early voting period to twenty sixteen, and that's about standard for a general election per week. And then, the larger packet, that is just the summary of the election result. And that's all, all races from federal all the way down through the local items, including the cities and schools. And the first page gives a breakdown of the total votes cast, election day vote that were cast, early voting, and absentee mail ballots. And one thing that I did want to point out also, on the right ends, um, in the constable races, constable four, constable five, and some of the presidential, if you see on here where it says not assigned on the right end, that means people wrote in things that, um, they weren't actually candidate names. They wrote in things like Mickey Mouse or Donald Duck, and so we can't do anything with that. So that's what not assigned means.
Why would you go to the trouble of going to the polls and then write something like that?
I wish I knew. Because it's time consuming to sort through those.
You know, we seem to get our results here relatively quickly.
Try to.
I know, I know, it's a lot that has to do with you and your office and the job they do. Why does it take so long?
In other places.
In other places.
Well, state to state laws are different. Texas, they give us the option to convene our ballot review board for mailing ballots, which that's pretty much what all these other states are struggling to work through. Texas, it's written into election law where we can convene the day after early voting. So we come up the Saturday after, and we spend all day with our ballot review board for them to verify signatures. So that doesn't have to happen on election day. Texas, we're not allowed to tabulate anything until election day. We spent about six hours tabulating our mail ballots on election day, that afternoon going into the evening. We tabulate and get everything ready for the returns. But Texas, that's something we do differently. They allow us to convene early, so that that's one, really the most time-consuming process. We can take care of that after early voting is ended, whereas some of these states, they're not allowed to verify signatures or review anything at all, or tabulate until election day. So they're trying to get their ballot review boards in, and especially these like major cities, when they've got hundreds of thousands of mail ballots, I do not envy them at all. And thankfully, that's something Texas does well. And I think as a whole, Texas as a state, everyone pretty much had their returns pretty well in line with the seven p.m. marker. That's what everybody shoots for, is to have them up at seven. Ours went up, I think, closer to eight o'clock, just because it takes time. It takes time to run through. But that's honestly, like, just laws state to state, and some of those governors from more eastern states, they changed things due to COVID, and put more restrictions on their election officials. So, yeah, I don't, I don't envy their positions at all. But that's, that's why, it's just because state laws differ.
I move we approve the election returns.
Second, from Mr. Gibson, the other discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Kate, we appreciate the job you did.
Thanks. Thank you. This one was a struggle. It was very trying, but we really couldn't do it without, you know, really truly the support of the court and of the county judge. I mean, just the approval of some of those grants, that made huge changes for our office, things that we would not be able to afford, to streamline our process, and just keeping our poll workers safe with PBE, and, you know, everything else to keep the public safe when they come in to vote. We could not do it without you. And along the other offices, Andy, we pulled Shuri and Jessica the other day to serve on our ballot review board, because we had volunteers not show up. That Saturday, I was discussing, we were supposed to have seven people, and they all had confirmed that they would be there, and they would be serving, and we had three show up. So with that, it took a lot longer than what we were expecting. And that rolled into Monday before election day, so we pulled Shuri and Jessica, we pulled some ladies from the county clerk's office. We couldn't do it without everyone working with us, so we very much appreciate it, and the support that you've given us been an interesting one, that's for sure.
Thank you. All right. Number four, discuss possibly approved issued certificates of election to county precinct candidates declared during the November third general election.
So if you voted in the county, you saw that last page where there were candidates that were declared elected. You could not cast a vote for those individuals that were just listed as declared elected. That was to save time for the county voters. It was gonna take about thirty seconds longer for each voter if they were to go through and have to make a selection, or choose not to make a selection on those names. That was through the secretary of state and came on recommendation from them, just because straight party voting did go away in this election, is the first election, Texas didn't have straight party voting. So those candidates were declared electing, and the next step in their process, until they're sworn in in January, is just to issue them a certificate of election, just to show that they their names were included on the ballot, but they were declared elected.
Motion for approval.
Have a motion, Mr. Whitworth, second, from Mr. Kurtindall. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. All of you.
All right, number five, discuss possibly approved voluntary applications, permit for the Russ County landfill, MSW, permit fifteen-seventy-seven.
I have no prior knowledge of this landfill, but apparently there was a landfill in precinct four. And from what I understand, Patty, this is what works to declare it. Close and conceal a loose ends, is what you're interested in.
So you know that he was expedited, as they went through it some point in time?
From, I don't know. From what the state says, yes. But we, we don't have any record documentation or knowledge, I guess. He remembers some going up there.
So that would be your motion?
Yes, my motion would be to approve, I don't know what that. Second, Mr. Hale, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Number six, discuss possibly approved following reports for October twenty-twenty. Our report treasures, Russ County just in peace, one, two, and five, County Constable one, four, and five. Russ County Expo reporting a bid, so we, Russ County Expo maintenance and maintenance.
Prove yours in the next minute.
It's really hot, and I'm, I'm getting a rain. No, it's just, I don't think we have any air going today.
Taking your fill on?
I'm, I'm, it just, it's all only I'm okay, I'm okay.
Okay. I move we approve items being treated.
Motion from Mr. Kurtindall, second from Mr. Hale. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Probably a comment, no actually, maybe take. Chief? Good to see you.
See you, sir.
Anything y'all want to tell us?
It's hard to change after talking.
Anything y'all want to tell us?
Could they be alive?
It is. What are you doing here? I knew you had to have some.
Actually, this is, I've been wanting to attend for a while.
Well, good, I'm glad you did.
Finally got somebody to help me out over there, so I had time to come over here.
Great. Well, you're welcome anytime.
We appreciate it.
They are. We'd be welcome. Charles, ever pass a physical? I don't think I could. Jean, you know, you want to tell us?
We had a busy, busy October, even after so many cancellations. I was really worried after our rodeo and our big St. Jude's feast canceled. But our festival came in, we were able to accommodate them, and it's a very successful month, and we have a, we actually have a lot going on on the calendar. We have quite a few probably doubled our livestock shows because Fort Worth canceled. So, we have a busy couple months. Our expo's still not very busy as far as parties and weddings and stuff. But I think we're making up with it with our arena and our livestock shows, so. We will, we will remain busy, especially through February.
We had a Raymond docked out there last week. It was excellent, excellent facility for that purpose, because you're able to spread people out. We're gonna do that again, we'll be soon. Probably be a few more, be Raymond and a criminal dock.
Well, and they're gonna do jury selection on the seventeenth.
So it's still ongoing?
Yes, sir. And so we're gonna see how that all works out. That'll be their first time, but they went ahead of, you know, and made arrangements to do jury selection out there for all of twenty-twenty-one, just in case.
Right.
So we're gonna be able to accommodate them on almost every one of their requests.
All right. Anybody else? We're a approval payment of bills. Now, back to.
This is the tourism, that the East Texas, and there's three different areas that the depot in. This is just a informational, this page, number six, just an official page regarding the depot museum, their hours, their normal hours, and things, kind of just data, you know, facts. Then, you have this surf festival for twenty-twenty-one. Now, the reason why she wanted to go ahead and, she'd already committed a long time ago to fill this book, and as you can see, all the there's many other Henderson, that, you know, the airport, Expo Center, they talked about the Expo Center in there. They're talking about a lot of things, so she felt obligated to just go ahead and, this is the third page, save the date, twenty-twenty-one. That's why she ran the ad. Um, I believe has been doing it for many, many years.
Suzanne Cross?
No, uh, no, the deep deck, Vicki, yes, I'm sorry, Vicki of Expo.
Well, but Suzanne Cross, the one that's over that little flyover pamphlet thing?
Oh.
I think she's, she's always, always.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah. That's where all three of those bills are.
Yes, there's a, you can see here, um, Live Magazine, Live Magazine, Magazine, and there's shared page, a fourth page, and a full page. And they gave us another free, free advertising here. Like to look at it. Right, see other questions, and I've asked it. That is why we all review this, if this is something that you'd like to, you know, we can definitely approve it and discuss that with you, so this is exactly why you're here.
Yeah, well, the, the point I've got, I'm glad Greg called it, is that we start buying glasses for everybody in positions that had very little chance of getting something in their eye, because it was worth it to do, and we'll be back wherever. And even though he is constable in my precinct, he is retired, I don't see that, you know, he I don't see that, you know, if he didn't need glasses, he could lash. He just wants.
Okay.
But I just, I think we should call that one out.
And I'll, as the only Roden Bridge that, that we are discussing, only, you know, for if anyone else comes. Because the eyeglass lady, she told, you know, they saw who he, you know, who he was, and said, and she's the one who discussed it with him and said, you need to get that paid for, so because Roden Bridge is getting managed for, or at least a percentage. So, so I don't think, I think that she's the one telling him, it wasn't his idea, you know, I mean, so, but I need to know, is this going to be only Roden Bridge or?
Yes.
Okay.
I can see, or maybe David or Travis or somebody that does work like that, we might consider.
Okay.
We will, we will talk to them on it.
And I might bring it to court ahead of time.
Like Mr. Hale said, we don't want to buy glasses for.
Yes, I mean, for myself, like me, I don't need to take the glasses. So I can bring it, I'll, if it's not a Roden Bridge employee, then I'll bring it to court ahead of time to be approved.
That sounds good.
That works for me, too. It's not.
It's been on us. We approve. We're overall billments. I think we need to make it related to that, please, go where, too? Where was it?
Anderson, not here.
Anderson, not here? Well, all right. Can't blame you for trying.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask someone to check.
All right. So how often do they inspect the elevator? I think that's by law, we, how we had to have done that, as many.
I don't know, monthly, it seems, it seems like it's pretty often.
How often do we have these elevators?
Once a year.
But they get to have to come because
Should. When do we replace it? Put the building there. Not necessarily the elevator here either. We got one up there.
We quit with service contract, it could have.
But it was. We did have a service call. Maybe it gets somewhere then.
We need to look at the contract to see.
You don't check on that, right? We've actually got three elevators now, and a jail, this one, and one is library. Is that correct? So I'll have anybody say anything to you about the fact that he had branch voting? And the impact that could add. Kate, you say anything about the lack of branch voting?
There were a few comments on Kilbore, which is to be expected, because that was definitely the area that turned out more. I did talk to Travis Party about branch voting, and he is going to push to try and get some type of legislature changed, or have that written back in to some context where we could have temporary again, because of the way that it's worded, I don't think that was the intent, but that's what happened. So I did speak with him a couple of weeks ago, and he said that that was on his radar going into the next legislative session, because he liked the way that we used to do it with the branch voting, but he said he hadn't received any complaints. We had a couple out of Kilbore, but what we tried to tell everyone, and the reason why we did a full week of seven A M. to seven P M., we did see that some majority of people that came that week in the extended hours, they were from Kilbore. And also the Saturdays, we had a lot of Kilbore voters come out during those two Saturdays. So that was our goal, was to try and make it accessible and have extended hours on weekends and through those weekdays, so that they could drag down. That was, those were the only complaints we received, were a couple out of Kilbore. I would say it was less than, plus than four.
I move we pay the bills except for the eyeglass bill, if we want include the elevator bill in that, or elevator can be on the next table. We're done thirty days, don't we?
Yes.
All right, everyone, Mr. Hale, second, Mr. Gibson. Excluding those two bills. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all for coming. Motion for Mr. Whitworth, second, from Mr. Gibson. All those in favor?